Good afternoon, everyone. Today we have a hybrid meeting. We have delegations present here in the Hall of the Americas and delegations that have connected online. Between those here and those connected in line, we have the following delegations: Antigua and Barbuda, Bahamas, Belize, Bolivia, Brazil, Canada, Chile, Colombia, Costa Rica, Dominica, El Salvador, the United States of America, Guatemala, Jamaica, Mexico, Panama, Paraguay, Peru, the Dominican Republic, Saint Kitts and Nevis, Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, Saint Lucia, Suriname, Uruguay, and Venezuela. We have quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon. I am pleased to declare open this regular meeting of the Permanent Council. And you all received the draft order of business. And we will consider that, the draft order of business. Under item four, you will see election of officers of the two committees, Hemisphere Security and Juridical and Political Affairs. We received a note from Canada today, and we thought it would be a consultation with them to put this item on the agenda for the next PC. So we consider only the Hemisphere Security today. That's the only change. Under other business, I have a very important communication to make, but when we come there, we'll see that. If there are no observations, then we adopt this agenda. Thank you. Before addressing the items on the order of business, I would like to first express our solidarity with the government and people of Belize following the severe devastation caused by Hurricane Lisa a few days ago, and with the government and people of Saint Lucia for the catastrophic floods occurred last Sunday. OAS member states stand ready to cooperate with our brothers and sisters in these sister In other matters, allow me on behalf of the Permanent Council to congratulate the delegations and people of Brazil on the general elections held on October 30th. We extend congratulations to President da Silva on his election and wish him every success as the head of Brazil's government. Additionally, allow me on behalf of the PC to congratulate the governments and people of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines and Antigua and Barbuda on the celebration of their national days on October 27th and November 1st, respectively, as well as to the governments and people of Panama and Dominica who also celebrated their national holidays on November 3rd. Dear colleagues, before considering the second item on today's agenda, I would like to present on behalf of the Permanent Council the commemorative gavel to our esteemed colleague, Ambassador Lou Anne Gilchrist, Permanent Representative of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines. Ambassador Gilchrist chaired this council during the third quarter of this year, a period during which she conducted the activities of this council with tremendous poise and efficiency. Ambassador Gilchrist, please receive this gavel as a symbol of our gratitude to you for your laudable stewardship of the OAS Permanent Council. I invite you to come forward. And if mine is missing, I may borrow this one, I think. For the second item on the agenda, which is in response to the request made by the delegation of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines through note CP/INF 9516/22, we will proceed with the election of a member of the Leo S. Rowe Fund Committee based on the provisions of Article III of its statutes due to the expiration of the term of service of the distinguished delegation of Paraguay last December. Before giving the floor to the delegations for the presentation of nominations, I would like to ask the Secretariat to show the very brief introductory video that the team of the Department of Human Development, Education, and Employment of the Executive Secretariat for Integral Development has shared with us regarding the Leo S. Rowe Fund. Please proceed, Secretary.
The Rowe Fund, a student loan program of the Organization of American States, was established more than 60 years ago through the will of the late Dr. Leo S. Rowe. Dr. Rowe was the director of the Pan-American Union, which is the precursor of the Organization of American States. The Permanent Counsel of the Organization is responsible for the administration of the fund through a committee consisting of a representative from the OAS Secretary General and four member state representatives. The social mission of the Rowe Fund is to grant interest-free loans to students from Latin America and Caribbean OAS member states. The loans help finance higher education or research at accredited institutions in the United States. At the same time, the Rowe Fund grants interest-bearing loans to staff members of the General Secretariat of the OAS. This supplementary financial aid covers just a portion of studies. The Rowe Fund's vision is to promote diversity and integration throughout the Americas with the understanding that graduates will return to their countries of origin to apply the benefit of their training. Many loan beneficiaries have contributed to the social and economic development in the region by occupying key positions in their country's public sector, academia, the arts, and the business. Dr. Rowe devoted the greater part of his life fostering understanding and integration in the Americas. He demonstrated a special interest in educating the youth of Latin America and the Caribbean, a legacy that continues through his last will and testament.
Thank you very much to the CD team for sharing this video with us. I now give the floor to delegations wishing to make nominations. The first is Paraguay.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. La delegación del Paraguay se complazó nominar a la distinguida delegación del Ecuador para formar parte de la comisión del fondo Leo S. Rowe en lo que se refiere al periodo correspondiente a la vacancia que debe ser llenada en el día de la fecha, a fin de cubrir el puesto ocupado anteriormente por mi delegación, la delegación paraguaya. Por nuestra parte es pertinente ser coherente con una postura que favorezca una adecuada rotación en estos cargos y especialmente manifestamos estar seguro de que bajo el liderazgo de la apreciada embajador Mauricio Montalvo, el Ecuador se va a realizar una excelente labor. Ojalá cuente con apoyo unánime de toda la ambesía. Muchas gracias.
Chile?
Muchas gracias, presidente. Chile desea agradecer el servicio de la delegación de Paraguay en el fondo Leo Rowe y secundar su propuesta de que sea el Ecuador y el mejor Montalvo quien represente la función que yo desempeñaron el periodo previo y pedir que sea aprobado por aclamación. Gracias, presidente.
Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, of course.
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the Rowe Fund, I express our most sincere appreciation for the support provided by the delegation of Paraguay. We welcome the delegation of Ecuador as a member of the Rowe Fund Committee and look forward to working with the representatives. Chair, the brightest and the best students, like those interviewed for the video, unfortunately we decided not to show all of the video, proceed from various parts of the world to attend prestigious universities in the United States for graduate and undergraduate studies. The Rowe Fund is therefore pleased to provide students from Latin America and the Caribbean with interest-free loans up to a maximum of $15,000 each. In my capacity as Chair of the Rowe Fund Committee, I now highlight the following for the general information of the Permanent Council. Next year, 2023, the Rowe Fund will be celebrating its 75th anniversary of proudly fulfilling Dr. Rowe's vision to contribute to the human development of Latin American and Caribbean citizens of OAS member states by granting financial aid in the form of interest-free student loans for students at universities in the United States. The Fund also provides educational and emergency loans to OAS staff members under specified conditions. When the pandemic struck in 2020, Chair, the Rowe Fund responded swiftly by creating a COVID-19 Emergency Relief Scholarship benefiting citizens of 19 OAS member states. Sixty-six students were granted such scholarships for a total of $131,000. International students in the USA were particularly affected by the pandemic as they confronted a variety of challenges, including relocation, isolation, and canceled job opportunities. The Rowe Fund maintains an ongoing donation campaign. One hundred percent of every donation goes towards scholarships. The assistance of OAS member states in this regard is greatly appreciated. Achieving a more balanced geographical distribution among beneficiaries is one of the goals of the Fund's committee. I therefore encourage the delegations to promote this important financial aid in their respective countries, embassies, and consulate to the United States and among their citizens currently studying in universities throughout the United States. The Fund is particularly interested in attracting citizens from underrepresented countries. Prospective applicants may apply at any time during their studies in the USA. However, they should commit to return to their country within a year after graduation. This is to allow them to make use of the optional practical training if they wish to do so. The Rowe Fund promotes friendship and communication among the peoples of the region through positive benefits of intellectual and educational exchange. If you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact Ms. Lina M. Seriano, the coordinator of the program. I thank you all for the courtesy of your attention. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ambassador. I think it's good that we know a little bit more about the Rowe Fund. And I congratulate also the permanent mission of Ecuador in the person of Ambassador Mauricio Montalvo on his election as a member of this Fund Committee. And I give the floor to Ecuador.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente, y muy gentil por sus últimas palabras. Simplemente, la delegación del Ecuador quisiera agradecer la confianza que le ha sido depositada a este momento y espera cumplir adecuadamente como lo ha hecho la distinguida delegación de Paraguay conforme el espíritu y los propósitos que tiene este fondo. Como la embajadora de Saint Vincent y las Grenadines lo acaba de evocar, cumple un rol muy importante y de servicio a todos nuestros conglomerados. De manera particular, quisiera expresar mi gratitud a la delegación permanente de Chile por el acuerdo que hizo posible la designación de Ecuador en este comité. Muchísimas gracias.
United States.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the United States, we congratulate Ecuador and thank you for your willingness to serve as a member of the Rowe Fund Committee, and we also thank Paraguay for its service on the committee. My delegation would also like to take the opportunity to thank the efforts of the entire Rowe Fund Committee as well as the OAS staff who together work diligently to advance the Fund's mission ensuring its efficiency and continued growth. It is said that everyone dies twice. You die when your natural life comes to an end, and you die a second time when your name is finally forgotten. It is clear that Dr. Rowe is far from the second passing because of his generosity and his vision when he was alive and because of the fund that now bears his name, which continues to make a positive difference in the education and the lives of thousands as a result of this fund. Through the Rowe Fund's supplementary financial aid, the OAS contributes to educational and social advancement throughout the region, fulfilling Dr. Rowe's wishes and helping the entire hemisphere prosper. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We now go to the third item on the order of business, the installation of the subsidiary organs of the Permanent Council. Article 14 of the Rules of Procedure of the Permanent Council establishes that the following are permanent committees of the Permanent Council without prejudice to any others that may be established as such: the General Committee, the Committee on Juridical and Political Affairs, the Committee on Administrative and Budgetary Affairs, the Committee on Hemisphere Security, and the Committee on Inter-American Summits Management and Civil Society Participation in OAS Activities. To comply with the provisions of Article 28 of the Rules of Procedure, we will proceed with the installation of the permanent committees except for the Committee on Administrative and Budgetary Affairs, whose mandate continues until January 1, 2023. If there is no objection, the permanent committees of the Permanent Council are hereby installed. Then we go to item four, election of officers of the subsidiary following organs of the Permanent Council. And the next item concerns the election of these officers of the committees just installed. The General Committee is chaired by the Chair of the Permanent Council pursuant to the provisions of Article 15 of the Rules of Procedure of this council and in accordance with Article 21 of the Rules of Procedure. The Committee on Inter-American Summits Management and Civil Society Participation in OAS Activities is chaired by the representative of the member state presiding over the summits of the Americas process. With that said, we will proceed to the election of the Chair of the Committee on Hemisphere Security. In this regard, the permanent mission of Mexico on behalf of the North American Regional Group presented through note CP/INF 9517/22 the candidacy of Ambassador Luz Elena Baños, Permanent Representative of Mexico, to serve as Chair of the Committee on Hemisphere Security for the 2022-2023 term. In accordance with a note from the permanent mission of Brazil distributed as document CP/INF 9517/22, Addendum 1, the candidacy of Ambassador Baños has the express support of the member states that comprise the South American Group. I now give the floor to delegations and recognize Canada.
Thank you very much, Chair. A pleasure to see you and colleagues this afternoon, and this afternoon I have the honor to nominate Her Excellency Ambassador Luz Elena Baños for election as Chair of the Committee on Hemisphere Security. Ambassador Baños is a career ambassador, has served as a foreign service official since 1986. Born in Mexico City, Ambassador Baños has a bachelor's degree in international relations from the National Autonomous University of Mexico, a master's in international service from the American University, and a master's in defense and hemispheric security from the University of Salvador in Buenos Aires, a double graduation program of the Inter-American College of Defense. Her career as a diplomat is extensive, and it's taken her to Panama, El Salvador, Trinidad and Tobago, Guatemala, Korea, Italy, and the United States. Prior to her coming and joining us here as Permanent Representative of Mexico to the OAS in May of 2019, Ambassador Baños was the Director General for Liaison with Civil Society Organizations of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of Mexico from August 2016 to January 2019. I think as many colleagues know, she's published various articles, essays, books, introductions, chronicles in different media on relations with Latin America, public diplomacy, cultural diplomacy, international cooperation, and citizens' participation. And I just wanted to add to that very extensive and important biography. Of course, we all know Ambassador Baños, and we know her as an engaged and engaging diplomat and colleague who's very much committed to working with all of us and hearing all points of view. She was an excellent vice-chair of the Committee on Hemisphere Security last year, and I know that she will be an excellent chair of the Committee on Hemisphere Security this year. So it's my honor and pleasure to recommend her for election by acclamation, if we can, this afternoon as Chair of the Committee on Hemisphere Security. Thank you.
Thank you, and I give the floor to Ambassador of Argentina.
Gracias, presidente. Es para secundar la propuesta de Canadá, para que la distinguida embajadora Luz Elena Baños presida el próximo periodo de la Comisión de Seguridad Hemisférica y solicitar si es posible aprobarlo por unanimidad. Muchas gracias.
Our congratulations to the Permanent Representative of Mexico, Ambassador Luz Baños, on her election as Chair of the Committee on Hemisphere Security. And I think that she is there, so we will give her the floor. Ambassador.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Agradezco a las delegaciones de Canadá y Argentina por presentar la postulación que hiciera el gobierno de México para presidir la Comisión de Seguridad Hemisférica, así como a todas las delegaciones por esta elección. Será un honor presidir este órgano subsidiario del Consejo Permanente, que es reconocido en la organización por su productividad, diligencia, y efectividad. Deseo invitar a todos los grupos regionales a presentar postulaciones a las vicepresidencias a la brevedad, de modo que podamos iniciar los trabajos de esta comisión en el corto plazo, con miras a negociar el contenido de la resolución omnibus, promoción de la seguridad hemisférica, un enfoque multidimensional en tiempo y forma de cara a la próxima Asamblea General. Manifiesto el compromiso de trabajar en estrecho contacto con las autoridades de los organismos y entidades de la OEA que reportan a la Comisión de Seguridad Hemisférica, y me pongo a la disposición de las delegaciones para atender puntualmente los mandatos de la Asamblea General que correspondan a esta comisión, así como para atender sus inquietudes y prioridades. Gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you, Ambassador, and success with your new job. We now go to item five on the agenda, and the next item is the distribution of mandates assigned by the General Assembly at its 52nd regular session and other previous sessions, which complies with the provisions of Article 30 of the Rules of Procedure. If there are no objections, I think that this was contained, the distribution of mandates in document CP Doc. 5826/22, Correction 1. Is there anyone who wants to say anything on this? Otherwise, we adopt it. At this pace, I think we will be out of here very soon, and still have some time left for the Veterans' Day, which will be very good to the delegation of the US, I think. Item six. Let us now proceed to the approval of the draft resolution, transfer of funds from the 2021 regular fund program budget to the Capital Fund for OAS fellowships, scholarships, and training program. This was contained in document CP/CAPP 3862/21 as presented by the Chair of the Committee on Administrative and Budgetary Affairs. If there are no objections, then this is also approved. So esteemed colleagues, our next agenda item, number seven, is the consideration of the draft resolution to authorize an external firm to investigate allegations concerning the Secretary General, presented by the permanent missions of Antigua and Barbuda and Uruguay with the cosponsorship of the permanent missions of Guatemala, Paraguay, and Peru. Let me introduce this a little bit. On Monday, the 31st of October, I received a letter from Mr. Hugo Asensio, Inspector General of the OAS. In the letter which was sent to all of you, he drew attention of the Chair of the PC for a whistleblower complaint against the Secretary General. The letter ended with a proposal for the PC for its considerations, consisting of three elements. When I received the letter, I invited Inspector General for a meeting the very next day. I also went to the Secretary General the next day to hear from his side and received from him the letter which he had sent to the Inspector General, which you also have. Both persons made clear that in fact the Secretary General sent the whistleblower complaint to the Secretary General. complaint to the Inspector General and requested an investigation. And I want to underline this: the Secretary General himself asked for this investigation. At that point, I called a closed meeting with the regional coordinators because I wanted to get some feedback from them before moving ahead with this case. On Wednesday late in the afternoon, I received a note from Uruguay to hold a special PC on the allegations on Thursday. Since this issue was already dealt with by me and was not only of concern to one specific country, I delayed the meeting somewhat so I could consult with the regional coordinators. I met with the regional coordinators and invited the Ambassador of Uruguay also to be present. Just before that meeting took place, I received as Chair of the PC a second resolution on the subject from Antigua and Barbuda. During the meeting with the regional coordinators, it became clear that most, if not all, member states probably would be in favor of an investigation. But there were different views at that point about the type, cost, funding, and process of the investigation. It was also clear that many countries needed a couple of days more before a PC could be held. After this, several meetings were held by the regional coordinators with their own groups. Some wanted this to be dealt with during a regular PC rather than a special PC. Others suggested an open meeting of the regional coordinators first, to see where we stand. In the meantime, the sponsors of the two resolutions had produced a joint resolution, which was discussed during the regional coordinators' meeting. The new resolution actually took on board most of the issues that had been flagged earlier. The open meeting with regional coordinators was held on November eighth, and I believe that it was very useful in guiding us further. The sponsors of the joint resolution were open for suggestions, and some additions were made. The Inspector General also sent a second letter where, among others, he clarified why he would rather not undertake the investigation himself, but asked for an external investigation. You have also received that letter. Thus, we now have a joint resolution on the table that has followed the path of consultation, and I will give the floor to the two sponsors of this resolution. The Ambassador of Uruguay, you have the floor, sir.
Bueno, gracias, presidente, por su comprensión y le agradezco que tuviera la actitud y el reconocimiento de plantear el tiempo y la forma en el que se solicitó la sesión. Agradezco su disposición para poderla concretar. Cabe recordar que el asunto que nos ocupa, la Secretaría General, en su oportunidad, le solicitó al Inspector General que se realizara una investigación. Como usted anotó, esto no es un tema menor. Y corresponde recordar esto porque hace a la secuencia de acontecimientos que hay que tomar en consideración. Nunca es menor saber quién es el reclamante o el peticionante de una investigación o auditoría. Tenemos claro que la Inspección General se expidió de manera asertiva, como usted lo acaba de ratificar, sobre el recorrido de una auditoría externa. Repito, la Inspección General fue la que planteó de manera asertiva el recorrido de una auditoría externa. En nuestra lectura, ahí terminó su actuación. Ese fue el temperamento, el talante que se tuvo inicialmente, y solo lo refiero a manera de antecedente porque ahora que, como usted bien dice, estaríamos emprendiendo el camino de asumir esta investigación, no parece un tema lateral. Entiendo que la voluntad del órgano, el Consejo Permanente, al hacerla ser esta investigación dentro de las normas para el funcionamiento de la Secretaría General, así como todo el resto del arsenal jurídico específico que cabe tener en cuenta, que no es poco y que hemos estado estudiando y revisando por todos estos días, y que junto con la afanosas tarea de Sir Ronald Sanders, se ha trabajado mucho, se arribó al texto que ustedes hoy poseen por delante y que, como usted bien dice, señor presidente, cuenta con plástemes. La tarea de emprender entonces es una habilitación. Una habilitación. No sé cómo lo están traduciendo los traductores, pero en inglés probablemente sería una authorization, pero la palabra habilitación en el derecho español es un mecanismo que viabiliza algo, así como los términos de referencia, que son los parámetros de garantía y transparencia, mediante los cuales la tarea encomendada cobrará verosimilitud. La verdad pura es que junto a Sir Ronald hemos sido muchos de nosotros atentos y específicos con los términos de referencia, y eso es porque se busca conocer la verdad dentro del encuadre normativo de la organización. No voy a abundar en esto. En la reunión de coordinadores que fue un Consejo Permanente ampliado, creo haber sido bastante exhaustivo sobre cómo tiene que ser el núcleo duro de la tarea. Es entonces prudente y necesario, atento que el Consejo Permanente actúa como solicitante, pero también como lector de los resultados de la tarea encomendada, que se entienda esta doble condición y se proceda acorde a esa doble vía. Quien solicita, luego lee. Eso impelea la racionalidad y debiera alejar de otro tipo de procederes. Entiendo que el Consejo Permanente debe actuar con transparencia absoluta, reclamando a la misma su presencia, y repito, ubicando el territorio de los hechos con la verdad jurídica, si así correspondiere. Esa es la competencia y jurisdicción de lo que hoy se solicita. Cuestionar otra consideración no debería estar presente. Entiendo entonces que, en la medida que se actúa de manera constructiva, estamos todos contribuyendo a que corresponda aportar, por todos y cada uno de nosotros, lo mejor para la organización que integramos. Y me gustaría que mi compañero Sir Ronald Sanders avanzara en la explicación del producto que estamos aportando en la jornada de hoy.
I give the floor to Antigua and Barbuda. Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Before I introduce this resolution fully, may I say that the process by which we have arrived at this point on this resolution, in this Permanent Council, has been, in my view, in the best traditions of cooperation, transparency, dialogue, and compromise, in which this Permanent Council has done its very best work. And I thank all of the delegations who have contributed to bringing us here. Mr. Chairman, it's just as well that we reflect for a couple of minutes on how it is we got here and what it is we are talking about. On June the third, as you pointed out, sir, the Secretary General wrote to the Inspector General requesting an investigation into an anonymous email from someone using the assumed name OAS whistleblower. In handing that request to the Inspector General, the Secretary General undertook to, quote, "render whatever assistance the Office of the Inspector General may need to effectively and independently conduct the investigation." He also assured the Inspector General and his office that it will be free from interference from any agency of the General Secretariat and that they will have full access to all the records and information they request. In a letter dated October the thirty-first to the Chair of the Permanent Council, the Inspector General appeared to abdicate his responsibility to carry out the investigation by recommending that an external firm conduct it and setting out ways in which this could be accomplished. On November first, the delegation of Uruguay submitted a request to the Chair, together with the resolution, asking for a Permanent Council meeting on November second regarding this matter. The Uruguay resolution stressed the urgency of addressing the matter and held open the possibility of the investigation being conducted by either the Inspector General or an external group. Meanwhile, a meeting of the Caricom Group of countries in this OAS and wider discussion with other member states revealed a strongly held position that no money should be spent on an external investigation, since the Inspector General and his unit are already handsomely resourced by the taxpayers of member states to carry out the job. Those countries were also concerned that no money should be spent that might result in cuts in the number of OAS staff members or their entitlements. They work hard enough for both. They were also opposed to any reduction in the programs of the organization, particularly as cuts had been made to the budget and expenditures were trimmed, so that we were down not to the bone but to the marrow of the money that was available. On that basis, my delegation, as you said, Chair, wrote to you on November third, submitting a resolution for consideration by the Permanent Council on this matter. The resolution insisted that the Inspector General be instructed to carry out the investigation, quote, "utilizing existing resources to investigate any breaches by the Secretary General of the rules of the organization." No terms of reference were suggested in that resolution, precisely because the Inspector General is guaranteed independence of his operation and the modus operandi of his office is well established. In other words, as far as those countries were concerned, the Inspector General should have carried out his job. Now, immediately after the Antigua and Barbuda resolution was presented, I was approached by some delegations and by you, Chair, with the proposal that Ambassador Washington of Uruguay and I should explore the possibility of harmonizing our two resolutions to make the task of the Permanent Council easier and to allow it to deal with the issue as soon as possible. It was emphasized to me that no money to pay for the external investigation would be taken from the budget, and therefore no staff jobs would be cut and no programs reduced. The money would come from the indirect cost recovery reserve sub-fund. But even then, delegations such as mine did not want the money to be spent on an external investigation by a blank cheque. Therefore, Ambassador Washington and I worked on terms of reference for any external investigation so that we could limit the costs while allowing the investigator freedom to explore the relevant issues. It is on that basis that Ambassador Washington and I worked over the weekend of the sixth and seventh, Saturday and Sunday, and presented to the Chair on Sunday night a joint resolution with terms of reference and a request for an open-ended meeting of regional coordinators for wider consultation before a meeting of the Permanent Council. That open-ended meeting of regional coordinators was held on the eighth of November, and it attracted participation of the majority of member states. It reached a recommended plan of action. First, it was accepted that this matter was now no longer a technical discussion; it was a political legal matter for member states to decide. Second, it was accepted that the investigation would be outsourced to an external body that would take direction from a three-person committee named in the joint draft resolution, namely the Chair and Vice Chair of the Permanent Council and the Secretary for Administration and Finance. Thirdly, it was accepted that all member states were invited to submit to the two proponents of the joint resolution any suggestions they had on the terms of reference. Two delegations availed themselves of that invitation to make suggestions in writing concerning the terms of reference. They were Canada and Costa Rica. However, other delegations were consulted orally by both the Ambassador of Uruguay and myself, so we had the full benefit of a wide range of consultations. All of the suggestions made were taken into account in the changes to the terms of reference. Fourthly, it was accepted at that open-ended regional coordinators' meeting that the final terms of reference would be submitted to the Secretariat for Legal Affairs for clearance that the terms were legally appropriate and presented no legal obstacles. The Secretariat for Legal Affairs gave its approval of the terms of reference, and the diplomatic note reflecting that opinion was circulated to all member states. After the regional coordinators' meeting and work on finalizing the terms of reference was completed, the Inspector General wrote to you, Chair, on November ninth with new views on how the investigation should be handled and proposing changes to the terms of the resolution. In this regard, I point out two things. One, the Inspector General had already clearly indicated that he had no wish to conduct the investigation because of what he said might be perceived as a conflict of interest. It was he who had also proposed that the investigation be outsourced. In any event, at the open-ended regional coordinators' meeting, it had been accepted that the matter was no longer technical but a legal, political one to be advanced by member states. Mr. Chairman, all the agreed positions of the open-ended meeting were satisfied, and you, Chair, named this date and this time for this Permanent Council to consider the joint resolution. the joint resolution proposed by the delegations of Uruguay and Antigua and Barbuda with the co-sponsorship of Guatemala, Paraguay and Peru. This resolution has been properly circulated in good time in accordance with the rules of the Permanent Council. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, my delegation proposes that this Permanent Council now vote on the resolution by roll call in accordance with the rules of this Permanent Council. I so propose. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ambassador. Considering the request made by the delegation of Antigua and Barbuda, we shall proceed to a vote to determine whether delegations do or do not approve the draft resolution being considered by the Permanent Council. The Chair wishes to remind delegations that once the voting has begun, no representative may interrupt it except for a point of order relating to the way it is being conducted. In accordance with Article fifty-seven, the decisions of the Permanent Council shall be taken by the vote of an absolute majority of its members. The Chair also reminds that under Article fifty-eight, voting will be done by roll call and the vote of the representative shall be cast in favour, in opposition or in abstention. And I think I will decide by the lot the order of precedence and the voting. You won't believe it, but it's Suriname. I missed the power ball, though. I want to ask the ASG to conduct the voting. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We will now begin the vote by roll call, beginning with the delegation of Suriname. Suriname, how do you vote?
In favour.
Thank you, Suriname. The delegation of Trinidad and Tobago, how do you vote?
In favour.
Thank you, Ambassador. La delegación de Uruguay, ¿cuál es su voto?
A favor.
Uruguay votes in favour. La delegación de Venezuela...
A favor.
Venezuela vota a favor. The delegation of Antigua and Barbuda, how do you vote?
In favour.
Thank you, Ambassador. La delegación de Argentina, ¿cuál es su voto?
A favor.
I will just ask the delegations to please wait until I call your name before you turn on your microphone because the cameras have to focus on you when you vote, so just... Thank you. Argentina vota a favor. Gracias. The delegation of the Bahamas, how do you vote?
In favour.
Thank you, Ambassador. The delegation of Barbados, how do you vote?
In favour.
Thank you, Ambassador. The delegation of Belize. Barbados, can you turn off your microphone, please? La delegación de Belize, can you tell me if Belize is connected? Ambassador of Belize, please, how do you vote?
Did you hear that?
Ambassador, can you please repeat?
Belize abstains.
Belize abstains. Thank you, Ambassador. The delegation of Bolivia... La delegación de Bolivia, ¿cuál es su voto? Bolivia conectado en línea. Perdón, embajador, no se le escucha.
Ahora sí.
Ahora sí.
Bolivia vota a favor, señor secretario. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, embajador. In favour. The delegation... La delegación de Brasil, ¿cuál es su voto?
Brasil vota a favor.
Brasil vota a favor. The delegation of Canada, how do you vote?
Canada votes in favour, Chair.
Thank you, Ambassador. La delegación de Chile, ¿cuál es su voto?
Chile vota a favor.
Gracias, embajador. La delegación de Colombia, ¿cuál es su voto?
Colombia vota a favor, gracias.
Gracias, la delegación de Colombia. La delegación de Costa Rica, ¿cuál es su voto?
Costa Rica vota a favor.
Gracias, embajadora. The delegation of Dominica... Fernando, can you tell me if Dominica is connected? The delegation of Dominica, can you please request the floor to cast your vote?
She's not requesting the floor.
Dominica, can you request the floor, please, to cast your vote? We will continue with the others, Mr. Chairman, and then come back to Dominica while we get somebody to try to call them. We will go out to the... A la delegación de Ecuador. Ecuador, ¿cuál es su voto?
Ecuador, a favor.
Ecuador vota a favor, gracias, embajador. La delegación de El Salvador, ¿cuál es su voto?
El Salvador a favor.
El Salvador a favor, gracias, embajador. The delegation of the United States, how do you vote?
The United States votes in favour.
Thank you to the United States. The delegation of Grenada, how do you vote? Fernando, can you tell me if Grenada is connected? Grenada is absent. La delegación de Guatemala, ¿cuál es su voto?
Guatemala vota a favor, gracias.
Gracias a la delegación de Guatemala. The delegation of Guyana, how do you vote?
The delegation of Guyana votes in favour.
Thank you, Ambassador. The delegation of Haiti, how do you vote?
La delegación de Haití vota abstención.
Gracias, embajador. La delegación de Honduras, ¿cuál es su voto?
Honduras vota a favor.
Gracias, embajador. The delegation of Jamaica, how do you vote?
In favour.
Jamaica votes in favour. La delegación de México, ¿cuál es su voto?
A favor.
Gracias, embajadora, México vota a favor. La delegación... Seguimos con la delegación de Panamá. Panamá, ¿cuál es su voto?
La delegación de Panamá vota a favor.
Panamá vota a favor. La delegación de Paraguay, ¿cuál es su voto?
La delegación de Paraguay vota a favor.
Gracias a Paraguay. La delegación de Perú, ¿cuál es su voto? Perú? Micrófono para Perú, por favor. Oh, perdón, embajador Forsyth.
El Perú vota a favor.
Gracias, embajador. La delegación de la República Dominicana, ¿cuál es su voto?
A favor.
Gracias, embajador. The delegation of Saint Kitts and Neves, how do you vote?
In favour.
Thank you, Saint Kitts and Neves. The delegation of Saint Lucia, how do you vote?
Saint Lucia votes in favour.
Thank you, Ambassador. And the delegation of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, how do you vote?
Saint Vincent and the Grenadines vote in favour.
Thank you, Ambassador. Mr. Chairman, we will make another effort to see if Dominica connects to cast their vote, otherwise we will tabulate the count. Ah, there. Dominica? Dominica, how do you vote? We can't hear you.
My absolute... Good afternoon, my absolute apology. At the minute that you asked for my vote, everything went down. I am at home and I'm so sorry about that. Dominica votes in favour.
Thank you very much, Dominica.
And again, my apologies.
No need to apologise. Mr. Chairman, we will take a few minutes now to tabulate the count with your permission. We will proceed to count. Mr. Chairman, we can announce the results of the vote. Voting in favour of the resolution, we have thirty delegations, two delegations abstain and there is one delegation that is absent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With a vote of thirty in favour, none in opposition, two abstentions and one absent, the Permanent Council hereby declares the draft resolution to authorise an external firm to investigate allegations concerning the Secretary-General approved. I don't know if there are delegations that still want to take the floor on this one. Otherwise, I give the floor to the Secretary-General.
Gracias, señor presidente. En primer lugar quiero agradecer específicamente a mi presidente, el presidente Lacalle Pou, por apoyarme en este proceso, solicitar una investigación externa con las máximas garantías. Debemos salir por adelante siempre. Mi agradecimiento también al embajador Ronald Sanders, al embajador Washington Abdallah, a usted, señor presidente, al canciller Gustillo, a todos ustedes por tomarse tiempo para estudiar este caso y para proponer soluciones. Hemos tratado que sea un ejercicio de transparencia permanente por parte de nuestra oficina desde que se recibió el anónimo de OAS whistleblower. El mismo fue transmitido inmediatamente a la oficina del Inspector General para realizar las acciones que estimara pertinentes en la investigación e incluso para que la misma eventualmente se realizara de forma externa. Mi nota del tres de junio absolutamente clara al respecto y el Inspector General en su momento señaló que sobre la base de un anónimo con esas características no había suficiente evidencia para presentar una investigación, por lo tanto nuestro esfuerzo de eso fue hacer la denuncia que correspondía. Esta posibilidad de una investigación externa fue finalmente comunicada a usted, señor presidente, por el señor Inspector General. Al regresar de la Asamblea General a siguientes misiones, hemos nuevamente impulso procesar el avance de esta investigación. Hemos acompañado la primera resolución que demandaba una investigación externa con términos de referencias elaborados por la CAP. Acompañamos también, si era necesario, contaba con el apoyo manitario, una investigación realizada por el Inspector General conforme también fue propuesto y acompañamos esta resolución con términos de referencia específicos respecto a la investigación. Hemos vistos los esfuerzos para avanzar en esto y para que la investigación fuera realizada de la mejor manera. Hemos acompañado todas las propuestas con el afán de dar transparencia a nuestra actuación y con la visión de que definitivamente debíamos dar el mayor resultado como fruto y como conclusión de esas investigaciones. Por otra parte, quiero confirmar algo porque en su momento pareció que no era factible. Algunos de ustedes, obviamente prácticamente todos conocían la relación y yo quiero en definitiva confirmar y reconfirmarles, superconfirmarles, que existía esa relación. Lo saben, fui a cenas diplomáticas acompañados por ella en que estaban muchos de ustedes como invitados. Ella fue mi partner prácticamente por tres años a nivel personal, quizás los mejores de mi vida, aún cuando nuestra relación terminó hace meses. Como dice el poeta, "loving her is something that I will never regret". También saben porque me han visto trabajar que nada de esto puede hacer cambiar mi visión de las instituciones y su funcionamiento y la responsabilidad que tenemos respecto a las mismas y al funcionamiento de las mismas y eso los procuramos asegurar en este contexto. Gracias, señor presidente, y gracias por esta oportunidad de uso de la palabra.
Thank you, Secretary-General. We now move to the last item, item eight, other business. Distinguished colleagues, we want to give you the floor in case there is anything you want to bring for informative purposes here, but I want to... Would like to inform you that the Chair has received observations from some delegations regarding next year's regular session of the General Assembly. In this respect, the determination of the date and venue of the fifty-third regular session of the General Assembly will be included as an item of the agenda at our next regular meeting. I give the floor to delegations if they have any other issue under other business, otherwise I have one last important issue, but let's see if anyone else... Canada?
Thank you, Chair. Let me take the floor for a moment this afternoon under any other business. I take the floor today on behalf of my delegation and the delegations of Antigua and Barbuda, Chile, Costa Rica, Ecuador, Paraguay, Perú, the United States and Uruguay to draw attention to the sham municipal elections that took place on Sunday, November sixth, in Nicaragua. We are deeply disturbed by the whole electoral process and by the outcome of the elections, which do not reflect the will of the Nicaraguan electorate and which only serve to further impose the regime's hold on power. The ruling Sandinista National Liberation Front seized control of a hundred percent of municipal governments in that country. This result should not have come as a surprise, as was stated last week by the Inter-American Commission on Human Rights. The context in which these municipal elections took place was in no way conducive to a free or fair process. It must be recalled that more than two hundred civil and political leaders are still under arbitrary detention in Nicaragua. Many others have been forced into exile. The legal status of many political parties has been cancelled and civil society and human rights organisations are aggressively harassed. Further, many independent media have been forced to shut down. Chair, I'll conclude my remarks with some words in French, please. Le jour de scrutin, le régime a eu récord à l'intimidation dans les bureaux de vote, y compris auprès des fonctionnaires de l'État, afin d'influencer le vote. y compris auprès des fonctionnaires de l'État, afin d'influencer le vote. Lorsque les membres de l'AUA ont adopté la charte démocratique interaméricaine en 2001, nous avons convenu que la démocratie était indispensable à la stabilité, à la paix et au développement de notre région. Et nous nous sommes engagés à défendre ces valeurs et principes importants. Nous sommes incumbrés à tuer de condonner cette situation désastreuse et de assurer le peuple nicaragüense que nous ne manquera pas à notre devoir de dénoncer les violations de ses droits. Merci, monsieur le président.
Thank you, Canada. I give the floor to the ambassador of Mexico.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. La delegación de México, en su calidad de coordinación del Grupo Núcleo LGTBI de la OEA, desea dar lectura a la declaración que suscribimos las delegaciones integrantes de este grupo con motivo de la conmemoración del día de la visibilidad intersexual. Procedo a leerla. Los Estados miembros del Co-op Grupo LGTBI de la OEA nos sumamos a la conmemoración del día de la visibilidad intersexual que tiene lugar el 26 de octubre, haciendo un llamado a poner fin a todas las formas de discriminación y violencia en contra de las personas intersexuales. Las personas intersexuales naturalmente presentan cuerpos que no se ajustan a las nociones binarias de cuerpo femenino o masculino. De acuerdo con estimaciones de expertas y expertos en la materia, entre el 0.05 y el 1.7% de la población mundial nace con características intersexuales, las cuales abarcan un amplio espectro de variaciones corporales innatas. La diversidad corporal de las personas intersex incluye entre las características o anatomía sexual, sus órganos reproductivos, patrones hormonales o patrones cromosómicos. Las personas intersexuales enfrentan violencia y discriminación motivadas por perjuicios, estereotipos y desconocimiento en torno de sus características sexuales y necesidades. Su integridad física se vulnera al someterles a procedimientos quirúrgicos sin consentimiento libre e informado, con consecuencias graves, dolorosas y frecuentemente irreversibles, tanto para su salud física como para su salud mental. En el marco del periodo de sesiones exorbitarias de la OEA en Lima, bajo el lema "Juntos contra la desigualdad y la discriminación", se adoptó la Resolución Óbvia de Derechos Humanos, en cuya sección, Derechos Humanos y Prevención de la Discriminación y la Violencia Contra Personas LGTBI, se acordó instar a los Estados miembros a que adopten medidas que aseguren una protección efectiva a las personas intersex y a que implementen políticas y procedimientos según corresponda, que garanticen que las prácticas medicas con respecto a las personas intersex respeten los derechos humanos. Los Estados miembros del Grupo Núcleo LGTBI de la OEA reafirmamos nuestro compromiso de proteger los derechos humanos de todas las personas, independientemente de su orientación sexual, identidad o expresión de género o sus características sexuales, con el propósito de promover el fortalecimiento de sociedades inclusivas y democráticas. Gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you, Ambassador, and I want to remind you that next Tuesday there is a special Permanent Council also on this subject. I give the floor to the ambassador of Venezuela.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Muy brevemente, para informar al Consejo Permanente, especialmente a los embajadores que aún no lo saben, que el día de ayer le fue conferido al poeta venezolano Rafael Cadena el Premio Cervantes. Este es el premio más importante que se concede a quienes escriben en castellano, y para nosotros es un inmenso orgullo que a los 92 años de edad Rafael Cadena, que es un ejemplo de rectitud y de talento, haya recibido un premio más, ya que este no es el primero que él recibe, pero quería compartir con los delegados presentes en esta mesa la alegría de Venezuela ante este nuevo galardón para nuestro poeta Rafael Cadena.
Thank you, Ambassador. This is indeed important that we get these prizes and that people are recognized. The United States has the floor.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. As a matter of other business, I just wish to speak on behalf of the US government to recognize the public service and principled commitment of Elizabeth Abi Mershed, who was the Assistant Executive Secretary of the Inter-American Commission on Human Rights. Elizabeth passed away on October 17th. For the US mission to the OAS, it was a pleasure and an honor to work with Elizabeth for nearly three decades to advance the cause of human rights and the rule of law throughout the hemisphere through the Inter-American Human Rights System. Elizabeth embodied the best qualities that any of us can bring to contribute to this organization: a deep intellect, political acumen, quiet determination and collegiality. For over twenty-five years at the Commission, she worked to deepen regional respect for women's political and human rights, to facilitate interregional cooperation between the Inter-American and African human rights systems, and to enhance the OAS's role in bridging gaps between our hemispheres' common and civil law regimes, notably in the Caribbean. Mr. Chairman, today we highlight Elizabeth's legacy before this council. We recognize her unwavering dedication to the defense of human rights and fundamental freedoms. She was a true friend and ally of the OAS, and she will be deeply missed. Our thoughts are with her family and her many colleagues and friends. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else to take the floor, so my last remarks have to do with a very special event that will start on the 20th of November and will continue for some weeks. I think it's called the World Cup Soccer. And eight of our member states are in there, in Qatar, and I think also some very important observers have, keeps there. So this is a major event. I don't say that we won't have any PC during that period, but we have made some accommodations for those who really want to see the games. In the delegates' room, there will be a television, and it would be nice if some of the member states who are participating could donate maybe a shirt or a ball or whatever, put it in the delegates' room so we can have a nice atmosphere there, and at least you don't have any excuse not to come to the OAS. Thank you for that, and with that, I'm closing this session.